Good evening. I'd like to welcome you this evening to Northborough School Committee's open meeting of February 5th, 2020. It is 7:03 PM. We're going to go right into the first item on our agenda. We have action on minutes this evening. We have four packets of minutes in our packets this evening. And we have them for January 6th, open and executive, and January 3rd, open and executive. So I will entertain motions if you want to do them separately or together. I guess we can do them, probably best to do it separately. I move to approve the open meeting minutes of January 6th, 2020.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, that's all set. And the second one, I'll entertain a motion to approve and retain.
So I moved. I moved to approve and retain the executive session minutes of January 6th, 2020.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sure I move to approve the meeting minutes from this special open meeting on January 23rd, 2020.
Great.
All second.
All those in favor? All right. And the last one, I would entertain a motion for approving and releasing.
Approving and release or retain?
A release.
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 I move to approve and release the executive session minutes of January 23rd, 2020.
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Great. Thank you. And the next item on our agendas we're going to move into is a legislative update.
Sure. So just a couple of updates. First, the Student Opportunity Act. The governor released his House version of the budget, so we have more accurate numbers in terms of Chapter 70 funding. Northborough, in terms of Chapter 70 funding, received around $30,000 to $40,000 more than fiscal year '20. So typically, we see a small increase annually, and we weren't projecting a large increase. Again, the Student Opportunity Act is redistributing educational funding across communities that are serving some of the most neediest of students, so communities that have a large population of socially, economically disadvantaged, like Worcester, Springfield, and so forth. The one piece that we're waiting to hear and learn more about is reimbursement on special education transportation and to hear how much additional funding we'll receive for that particular category. So we probably won't know more until the summer, I would predict. So not a lot of news on the Student Opportunity Act, and we're just waiting for more information to be released. But the Chapter 70 numbers was very helpful because now we have a firm number to work with in terms of our budget. The other, in your packet also, is MASC summary of the 2019 resolutions. So at each of the fall, MASC conferences, the delegation comes together and votes resolutions. So that is just a summary of how the delegates voted. Lastly, a mass budget summary of education funding. So the mass budget is a great resource for analyzing budget releases and how it's going to impact all different categories, from transportation to education. So obviously, really looking at mass budgets, analysis of that Student Opportunity Act and how it will fund education. So those are a few legislative updates. So again, we're waiting for information on the Student Opportunity Act at this point in time.
The next item on our agenda is the Food Services Update.
So we have Kyle Parsons, the Food Services Manager, who will share an update with the committee and the community on food services in our district, and some of the great work that he and his team are doing, and some of the changes that have taken place over the past two years. So welcome, Kyle.
Thanks for having me.
Been summoned to the principal's office. Just with the motion of a thing.
There's the power.
Are you ready?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Just want to go over some of the things that we're going to review tonight. Let's see. So I want to give you an update on our eco-friendly products that we're using, our Farm-to-School Initiative that happens year-round. Go over briefly our participation levels, a little update on our Nutrislice system, and improvements to our menu that we're doing. So as you know, the town in Northborough, as of January 1, we can't do Styrofoam products anymore. So with that being said, there are a lot of products that are available to us. Unfortunately, a lot of them cost a lot more money. Being that we're on such a tight budget, we just can't go crazy and buy everything that we want. So we have to make a few fundamental changes. You know, the Styrofoam was used when dishwasher went down, or field days, or something like that, where the convenience was that people would just use the product and, you know, use the Styrofoam and throw it away. So we're really looking at other ways that we can, if the school has a lunch bunch and the kids go somewhere else, they're going to have to bring their trays back. So there's a little bit of convenience and things that have changed with the students, and it's just our behaviors that have to change. There's a lot of other things that we kind of started to look at. You know, straws, big thing. The kids don't want straws because we need to save the turtles. So we've started to eliminate our straws. We kind of had some product in-house, and we kind of have used it all up, and we just won't see straws again. There are other products available, but they're not a good product, and they cost more money. So we can't say, hey, we're going to go to a bamboo straw because they're eight cents apiece instead of .01 cent that the straws used to be. So we just can't afford it, and they just don't work. So why buy them? So, you know, there's fundamental changes that we have to do. You know, we're able to buy some soy-based and plant-based plastics, as they were, that actually biodegrade once they get back into the earth. Five years ago, those products were few and far between. They were very expensive. Now they've actually come down, and they're a little bit more than the plastics we were using. So we're starting to integrate those products into our new lifestyles. Like I said, we're investigating straw alternatives. We just haven't seen anything that's usable as of late. Okay. So again, that's an ongoing problem that we're always looking for. We're just finding new ways that are better for the environment. Again, with like our plastic service ware, they have some soy-based product, but usually doesn't last a whole meal service. So again, we're kind of looking for what's available out there. You know, we're kind of looking at maybe possibly going to metal and going back into those old systems. So again, changes that are going to be happening as the year goes along. Farm-to-school initiative, you know, this is one of those things that when we come back to school, there's some lettuces and carrots and celery that we're able to purchase locally that come to us. All of our vendors, our produce vendors already purchase products as locally as they can. They come to us, they let us know what we're using. But unfortunately, with New England and the weather, the product comes or leaves quickly as soon as school comes back. But we did receive from Tugas Farms, he had some Acun's, Gallows, and Red Delicious that he gave us like 10 cases. So every school got a case or two. So we were able to distribute those. We put little signs out that the kids know, and they were the absolute best Acun's anybody I've ever had in my life. So again, local coming to us. You know, our carrots, I believe we're kind of done with the carrots coming out of Massachusetts. You know, they come out of the ground, they go into a big refrigerated area, and they pull the oxygen out, and they just hold for a while, but those are quickly gone. And then we're always looking for other vendors who are close to us that can offer us products that the kids want to eat, that we could serve, that makes best business sense for us to use, because a lot of the stuff sometimes can be a little pricey, and we just can't really afford it. But again, you know, at the end of this school year, we'll start using some locally grown products. Our participation levels, the, I don't know where here. As we can see, I kind of went back to like 2014, and it's just kind of interesting to look at some of our trends. We can see in like October, 2014, our amount of free students we had was 160. In 2018, we had 216, and in 2019, we had 225. So we've gained nine free students from last year. Our reduced students, 2014, we had 43, 2018, we had 54, and in 2019, we had 68. So we went up 14 reduced students. So our total enrollment 2014 was 1,761. 2018, we've dropped to 1,596. 2019, we're at 1,599, so we've gone up three in the past year. So average participation in all of the schools, 2014, we were at 644, and 2018, we were 703, and then this October, we were down to 689. So we had one less service day. We just had an interesting October. So unfortunately, the January numbers weren't out yet when this presentation was due, but I have those numbers now. So as of this January, we did 720 average kids came into our, so we were up 21 from last year. So we're happy with that. When we track this every month, we're always looking to improve on getting the kids in. So that being said, the way we look at it is our average daily attendance is, I can't serve a meal to a kid who's not here. But this is another tool to see how, if we have a lot of kids sick or something like that. So in 2014, average daily attendance was 1,715. In 2018, it was 1,549, and then in 2019, it was 1,550. So we're averaging about the same this year. So that's where we are with that. Our Nutrislice, Nutrislice was a program we really wanted. We wanted to just get the more information out there that we could. So it's a program we've purchased. It's been going on for about nine months now. I hope everyone has seen it and tried it. Our monthly reports show us we're getting about 276 to 424 hits on the average of parents or students. It also tells us if they're using their phones, if they're using a laptop. It tells us how many we get from Facebook and things like that. So it's really neat, it really drills down that we can see where people are coming from to get to the actual program. The nutritional information is on there. There's a little brief description of what we have. It actually has an allergy filter, so if you have a child who's allergic to soy, you click on that, and it'll actually cross the menu items off on the menu, so you can't see it. So they know that you're going to say, hey, go have that because it has soy. So it's a very powerful tool. Mary Ellen Duggan and I worked on that. She's our District Wellness Coordinator, so we sat for hours and hours and hours and poured over that and put it all in there. So it's just, it's a great tool. Please go check it out. It's interactive. Students can leave, rate the product and leave comments. The comments I can see. It's just another great tool. It's a lot of fun. Sometimes I know the things we do, I don't know if you guys can see exactly what it is, so that's why I wanted to show you some examples of what we do. So one of the things we've really tried to do is, I have a 16-year-old and a soon-to-be 14-year-old at home. So my son loves to play with his food, and we know kids do too. So we kind of decided we're going to try to do some more interactive-type foods for the children. So we're doing like our taco here, and we're putting things on the side so they can kind of build it, kind of get them, so they can customize it, they can have fun with it and enjoy it. So this is like an example of, we're doing like a Spanish rice, a steamed corn, the tacos. We have salsa and sour cream there, kind of hard to see in that picture, lettuce and tomato. And up at the top is some fresh blueberries that's a government commodity. So that's what that looks like. So another thing we started to do is, it's a government commodity, it's a fish and chips, or it's a fish stick. It's actually, it's a whole muscle product, so it's not like it's chopped and formed, it's actually whole muscle, so it has that nice flake to it. This is a whole grain breading on it, so we bake it, it's not fried. So one of the things we wanted to do is, we know, we try to teach or treat our students like a customer, and we try to do fun things. So if you went out somewhere and you got fish and chips, it's traditionally in like a London newspaper. So we went out and bought these. It's a paper, just has a bunch of words on it, and it looks like a London newspaper. So we put that out there, and the kids, I thought, really liked it, and they were trying to read. And it's, you know, it's got some descriptions, it doesn't really say anything, but they're reading it out there. So, you know, these cost us like three cents. We cut them in half, so it's a penny and a half. You know, we don't like to put extra money into a plate that costs us, doesn't really gain anything, but it's just, we're trying to make it look fun, trying to be something you'd see as you went out. So this actually is quite popular. You know, we've really been trying to, we do something new, we run it, and then we kind of assess how it went, and then we run it again. And then we run it another time, because our numbers start to go up, because the first time they see it, they may not know what it is, kids start to enjoy it. You know, that's our own homemade coleslaw, so it was just a real good product. Pizza dippers with a Caesar salad. So once again, the Caesar salad, we have a nice light dressing that we put on it. We're using real Parmesan cheese in there. It's not, a little bit of Parmesan cheese goes a long way with that. The pizza dippers, the children can pick it up and dip into our homemade tomato sauce. Lot of flavor, a lot of fun, and a lot of excitement. You know, we're taking like our cucumber slices and we're striping them so that they have that nice color appeal, with a couple of cherry tomatoes and that stuff, you know, you put out cherry tomatoes by themselves and they won't sell. You put out cucumber coins by themselves and they don't really take them, but you start mixing it up and they start taking it. So just another fun thing that we're trying to do, get the kids to eat. This is our pasta with meat sauce. This is a homemade garlic bread that we make. You know, we season it, garlic, a little Parmesan cheese. The picture doesn't really show, but it has some Italian seasoning spices in it, so it's not just garlic butter. So we're trying to make it taste good. That's a whole grain-rich product. Steamed baby carrots, that's a homemade pasta, I mean homemade pasta sauce that we make with a whole grain-rich ziti. And then crazens, these actually come from Massachusetts. The last batch we had were actually from Massachusetts, so that's a homegrown product Some of our grab-and-go items, you know, these are more towards the middle schools. But again, these are Caesar salads, and we take croutons and keep them separately so that they have, they maintain that crunch. So the kids put it in the clam shell, they shake it up, just like you would go if you went to Panera or anyplace like that. So they're very popular, so it's offered pretty much every day at the middle schools, or your middle school. And then next to it is a cereal grab-and-go. So, you know, the way we look at food is, we look at it as components. So, you know, the cereal is your whole grain-rich, the yogurt and a cheese stick in there, that's your meat alternate, and then with a craisin or a fruit or an apple, that's your third component that we need for it to be a reimbursable meal. So all of these things are packaged as a reimbursable meal, so they take that and a fruit, and they're good to go. It's a reimbursable meal. So everything with us is, we're just looking for that reimbursable meal. So, you know, a couple of other things we're doing is, unfortunately, I don't have a picture of, is we found a breadstick that we like. So we're taking this breadstick and we're putting cheese on it, and we're calling it pizza bread, cheesy breads, and the kids, again, you pull it off, and the cheese gets long and stringy, and it's just, it's just fun, interactive food with a nice sauce. It's doing great. So, you know, we're just trying to do different fun things, keep it interesting, light. You know, we try to pay attention to the trends. You know, Kentucky Fried Chicken, KFC brought back their popcorn chicken bowl. So we do that here in Melican. So it's an alternate meal. It's on the side, but we'll sell 80 portions of it. And we make our own mashed potato, we put some corn, some popcorn chicken, and hit it with some gravy, and the kids go bonkers for it. So, you know, we do a pot pie bowl in that also. We're just doing a lot of different fun things. Kids really like it, and they're quite popular. So I think that's all I really, well, there was a thank you screen, but anyhow. That's all we have.
I'll go to the committee for comments and questions.
That's great. Thank you so much. I remember a couple of years ago, it was my first, so it was probably last year, there was a Massachusetts Farm-to-School initiative type thing, and it's an organization that does it, and I know some neighboring towns to do it. And I remember suggesting, looking into something like that, and I think it's like every other year or something like that. I don't know if you've looked into...
We're always working with farm-to-school. It's just, unfortunately, it's very hard with the seasons and the way things happen and the time, and then what's available. Like arugula is a hard sell for me, and it's so expensive. It doesn't always make sense. So we're always looking for different things. It just really depends on the season. So like I said, a lot of our vendors purchase from these farms, and they come to us. Like I know we were using apples, again, some come from out of New York. There's just not that many really local stuff to us that has items. But we're always looking, I've contacted, there's a food, if I say food bank, that sounds, it's a collaborative, so it's...
Cis addictive.
Yeah. So we're looking, we're talking to them. You know, we're always trying to figure out ways to get product to us, because we can't really go pick it up, and, you know, they can't come just give us a case of this, a case of that. So, you know, we're trying to just figure out what works best for both of us, but we're always looking to do that. You know, there's a product I looked at today that, at the USDA Food Conference, and it's growing product in-house, and it's, you know, using it with STEM programs, so I'm really excited about that. So we're going to try to look and do some of that. It's just, there's a cost with it, but kids can grow their own vegetables, and mostly lettuces, because they're done in about 45 days. So, you know, we're always just constantly trying to do that. It's just, you know, unfortunately, the root vegetables, the turnips, are always around, and it's like, the time you get a turnip in and peel it and try to cook it, try to get a kid to eat it, it's a hard sell.
I hear you. Got two at home.
Yeah. So, I mean, we do what we can. I don't think I promote it enough, so I'm definitely going to be looking to do that. But that's why I'm hoping to put things together like this, so that you can actually see what we're doing.
Well, thank you so much. You've done a lot of, it looks like you're really looking into a lot of different innovative ideas and a way to move the program forward and getting the kids to eat the meals, which is good for them to get proper nutrition. So we really appreciate your hard work in bringing this presentation to us.
Yeah. I liked your details about sort of options for utensils, whether you go biodegradable or back-to-metal. Are there any logistics for using biodegradable utensils? Do they need a separate bin? Would they go in the trash bin, a compost bin? And what do you currently have?
Well, that's where a lot of these things, you kind of have to look at as a holistic approach, get the schools involved. I know a lot of people want to look at doing composting bins and things like that, but that creates a lot of challenges. If you're taking food and putting it in a corner of the room at room temperature, how long before it starts to go bad? And how long before you get fruit flies? And now we're introducing that. You know, who's going to take it outside and who's going to actually be composting, who's going to benefit from it? So there's a lot of those types of issues that we're really kind of starting to look at. You know, a lot of that compostable stuff is, we don't really bury our trash anymore. A lot of our stuff is incinerating. So it's a matter of, is that really necessary? Or does it make sense, one way or the other? You know, cost? You know, so there's like, there's this whole, it's a big issue, and then we're just kind of trying to muddle our way through it. Like I said, five years ago, half of these products didn't even exist. You know, the soy-based and the bamboo straws and the paper straws. Has anybody ever tried a paper straw? Yeah, they're not, it's a horrible product. And, you know, I'm just being honest. You know, everyone's like, oh, the stainless steel, but health departments don't like stainless steel, because then you've got to brush them out and sanitize them and clean them and all these things. You know, it's just a huge, at what cost on the other end? You know, spend that kind of labor to do that? Or do we just have the carton and kids learn to open the carton and drink from the carton? So it's a constant evolving, because two years from now, the product's going to be completely different. You know, maybe it'll go, I've seen bamboo forks. You know, that's definitely eco-friendly, because it's a plant-based and biodegrades, you know, but at what cost? So it's always changing. You know, next year, when I do this presentation, it'll be different. I promise you.
Do they have plastic trays, or what are the trays that the schools use now?
Yeah, all our schools have five-compartment trays that we wash anyway. We just use Styrofoam when it was needed, because like if our dishwasher goes down, we can't clean, we only have enough to do one service, so after lunch goes through, we wash them and use them for the next one. Well, when our dishwasher's down, we can't wash them fast enough or wash them at all. So we have a paper product that we use. It's just, they're 10 cents apiece, 12 cents apiece, instead of, they were 1 cent, the Styrofoam was 1 cent. So times a lot of kids per day, that's very costly. So we're already further along than a lot of schools are with that, so we're just looking to get better with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next thing we have is music study group, or is that another?
Yes.
So you have music study group on the next agenda?
So Rhoda Webb has been leading the music study group, and she's been doing an excellent job, and she will provide you with an update this evening.
So we have had three meetings so far, and we're taking a look at all our programs, and there's so much to celebrate with our programs pre-K through 12. We have a survey going out in a couple of weeks, and we are looking forward to giving a presentation at the end of this school year.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda, we have grants and donations.
So we have a very generous donation by the Northborough Youth Basketball Association. They installed adjustable basketball hoops in the Peaslee Gymnasium. So it allows for not only Peaslee students, but the basketball association to level the basketball hoops to meet the needs of the kids. And that donation, the monetary value was $6,814, so it's quite substantial. So I just appreciate the Northborough Youth Basketball Association's donations and willing to collaborate with us in terms of improving our schools, but also providing kids our opportunities.
Wonderful. No vote required.
We should approve it.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
I move to approve the Northborough Youth Basketball Association's donation of backboards to Peaslee School.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Great. Extend our thanks and appreciation to Northborough Youth Basketball Association.
And the second grant is the approval of Boston Scientific's 2019 Possibility Grant. And the second grant is the approval of Boston Scientific's 2019 Possibility Grant that was awarded to Proctor School. And Alana, I'm not sure if you wanna speak to that grant?
So we are very excited and very grateful to Boston Scientific. Beth Hennessy, who works for Boston Scientific, um, we worked together and Beth really did the, the work and spearheaded a grant, a robotics grant for our school, um, and we received it. And so we've been working together with Julie Doyle and Dan Strickland to develop a robotics program. We're gonna pilot it this year with our third graders. Um, we're gonna do two six-week sessions and they're gonna learn how to code and build their own robots. And then they're gonna build, um, a smaller portable take-home robot at the end of the experience. They can take something home. And the materials that we're gonna be purchasing will be sustainable so that we can expand the program next year. Um, so we're very excited. We're looking forward to having Boston Scientific employees come in, work with our students, work with us and help us. So, um, we're just thrilled because it's gonna help us to move forward a project, an idea that we've been working on and make that come to life for all of our students over the next couple of years.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Hold on a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Extend, extend our thanks to Boston Scientific. It sounds like a great program moving forward. All right, so all business, we have none at this time, and then we have a superintendent's report to the committee.
So first on your, um, electronic packet, um, our enrollments. So we've had, um, no variability in our enrollment since last month, so our total enrollment in Northborough is, um, one thousand six hundred and two students. So we're, um, remaining steady, um, as one would expect for this time of year. Next in your packet is the FY twenty monthly general fund expenditure report, and I'll have Becky speak to that briefly.
So as you can see on the report, um, we had four hundred and twenty-seven, I'm sorry, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars remaining, or one point seven one percent. At last month, um, we had four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so we're, we're progressing along slowly. However, we are in a stronger position compared to where we were last year. Last year at this time, we had one hundred and seventy thousand remaining on the bottom line, or point seven percent, point seventy percent, um, of the budget remaining. So, um, we are, there are a few expenditures that, um, we do have coming up, um, so we do anticipate seeing those numbers coming down.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the budget as presented until...
Yep, great. Hold on a second. Any last discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you.
So next in your packet are the FY twenty-one budget goals, which, um, obviously we've been using to drive the budget process. Also in your packet is the FY twenty-one capital plan. Um, I just want to, um, share a little information about the capital plan since we last met last week. I presented to the financial advisory the, uh, capital project, um, that will be moved forward at town meeting this year. So worked very closely with town administrator John Kader and Scott Sharpton here, um, to think about the Melikan project. Um, so we've decided to, um, crack seal and recoat the main parking lot and also add some handicapped accessible ramps, um, in the front of the building for ADA accessibility as well as ADA accessibility and ramp in the back of the building. And this will be, uh, you know, a, a great addition for all the different ways that Melikan has used from voting to recreation to students. So I think it will really benefit from the community. And the other thing, uh, other part of the project is really, um, in the back, the walkway, um, that connects to, um, the main, the main, what's the, the road, Jill?
Pleasant.
Lincoln. Yeah, Lincoln. Not Lincoln, um...
Pleasant.
Pleasant, so thank you. Um, so a portion of that has been uprooted by tree roots, um, and the capital project will be, um, fixing that area, um, repaving that and then crack sealing and seal coating the, the walkway where necessary. So that is a capital project for FY twenty-one. So also, um, in your packet is the FY twenty-one recommended budget vote, um, and we did, I did present the recommended budget la- at last meeting, um, so we did not vote it and, so we'll need a vote this evening. So again, the, um, some of the budget drivers that we talked about were increased, um, costs of special education placements, um, student information system upgrade, digital resources, um, and then implementing year two of our tuition-free kindergarten transition plan. And lastly, just contractual obligations and line item increases. Um, so the, the recommended FY twenty-one budget is twenty-five million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, um, which is a recommended budget increase of, uh, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, or a three point one five percent increase over FY twenty. And again, it, um, it's a primarily a level services budget with a few growth areas. Um, again, uh, year two of implementing tuition-free full-day kindergarten, the student information system, instructional resources, and also, um, increasing our ability for translation services due to the diverse population that we're seeing, uh, entering into our, our system. So this evening, we'll request a, a vote to approve.
I vote to approve the recommend...
Motion?
Oh, sorry, I motion. I don't vote. I motion to approve, um, the recommended FY twenty-two-one budget of twenty-five million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. Motion passes.
And then, uh, lastly, the FY twenty-one budget booklet. So we, we do have, um, a date for the appropriations committee, which is, um, Saturday, March seventh. Um, and I did provide the committee with a draft of the FY twenty-one budget booklet that will be used to, um, present the budget to that appropriations committee. So I will be providing a hard copy of that to the committee in, in the next couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Moving on, educational policy, we have none at this time. Policy development, none at this time. And then we'll go into audience sharing. Do you have any members in the audience who would like to share this evening?
I can see one thing. So this is more, I think as a, as a teacher than as a view representative that I do for. But I have had an exciting, um, sharing that's happening in my classroom. You didn't even know about it, but, I have a former student, not that it makes me feel old at all, but I have a former student coming in. She is a marine biologist now. Uh, she was a fifth grade student of mine, now a marine biologist, coming back to my classroom. She worked with, and does work with Woods-Soloshenograft Institute and has been in the Antarctic studying the vocalizations of whales. So she's coming back to my classroom to share that on Monday. And I'm just so excited to have, well, to be that old. And have a former student come back and show just what, what's available for science and especially for human science. So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you.
Amazing.
So I have some audience sharing. Can we go this way?
Sure.
The reverse. So, um, you may not have heard, but Dr. Barnhart is retiring. So I would just like to, um, say a few words, um, about Dr. Barnhart. So I'm gonna ask her to stand up here with me.
So Jill loves the spotlight, so I would take advantage of it. She gets on TV. But I just wanna take an opportunity to publicly thank you for your years of service to the students and the community of Northborough. Um, the community and students have benefited greatly from your expertise and your guidance and your stewardship. Um, so on behalf of, of my colleagues in the district, we just wanna thank you for all of your hard work. You will be missed. But as we found out yesterday, we have some jobs for you to come back and do. You might be a principal substitute. What else did we decide that you could cover?
Lots of things, tutoring.
Tutoring, Title I. So, so we have some ideas, so she, you know, you might see her around next year. So, um, so we have a couple of, um, gifts that symbolize our appreciation. So this is, um, to Dr. Jill P. Barnhart in recognition of your years of service and dedication to the students and faculty of Northborough Public Schools, two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty. So, you might not know what this is.
Thank you so much.
But I think, I think you've given many retirees this gift, so it is a clock. So, um, I think the clock should say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so you don't have to really worry about...
It does not have an alarm on it, right?
No alarm. And this, um, next gift is a crystal apple, um, so just again, a token of our appreciation for your years of service. And I know you're disappointed this is your last school committee meeting, but you're more than welcome to, um, join us in the audience, so maybe we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much. So if I could just have a, a few words, um, I would like very much to thank my colleagues and the, um, Northborough School Committee. You have been incredibly supportive. There is not a moment that I don't feel that you are interested and invested in what goes on at Peaslee School and, and across the district and all of our schools. You have been kind and gracious. Personally, um, I have been, you know, greatly benefited from your generosity and your thoughtfulness. Professionally, you have always encouraged us to try new things and, um, you've been very supportive of all of the things that we've tried and, um, all of the things that we've, um, aspired to do here. And that does not ever go unnoticed and it is always appreciated. So, um, I just wanna say thank you so much. I have really, um, learned a lot in my time here and have benefited from it and feel that, um, I have become stronger because of that. And I have told Greg that certainly if there is anything that's needed or any way I can help, I am only a phone call or a text away and will not be going far. So, uh, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Since we're going this way...
And just, we'll close the meeting, um, later with cake, so everyone needs to leave with a piece of cake.
Or a quarter of one.
It's a lot of cake. So we're going this way? Got anything?
I'm, I'm good.
I, I'm also. I'll pass for tonight.
Well, the four of us decided that we would, um, let Jill have the last, uh, audience sharing of this meeting, so it's all you, Jill.
Oh. So, things going on at Peaslee School. Tomorrow, uh, all of our second graders will, um, where they're permitting, be, um, joining together for Kids on the Block. So Peaslee School will be going over to Lincoln Street and, um, Proctor and Zee are, are working together. And the students will be seeing a presentation of Kids on the Block, which is, um, a presentation supported by the Special Education Department and students at Algonquin High School. And they will be making these presentations from, uh, for grade two. Always an exciting day and an amazing presentation by the high school students. Kids really love it. Um, we also are planning to start, the PTO is, um, planning to sponsor a STEM beginnings program after school, beginning the week that we come back from vacation. And also that week, our fourth graders will enjoy a presentation by the Discovery Museum on lights and lasers. So another science program.
All right, sounds good. All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, personnel items. We have a personnel report in our packets. Uh, communications, none at this time. And our future agenda items is the public hearing for the FY twenty-one budget that we just approved at this meeting.
We'll have some additional policies to bring forward next meeting.
Okay, policies. Yeah. Sounds good. All right, and then we have approvals of bills and payrolls. And then I will need a motion to move into executive session. How does that work if we want to have cake?
To move into executive session?
We'll call it.
You can have cake, you just can't talk about it.
Just don't talk.
Okay, okay.
That's a good one.
It's fine.
You have to amend the motion, add the cake.
But we still need a motion for our executive session and then...
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination. The discussion regarding this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting.
I second. And we need a roll call voice vote?
Yes.
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 All right, since this meeting is adjourned and we moved into, uh, executive session...